Right there. That's the question I ask.
All right, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website, in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Tonight, the prayer will be offered by Legislative Affairs Manager Donna Graham. And Alderman Chris Thibodeau will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cleat. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Alderman Cleat is home, uh, unable to join us. Also joining us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Going to go right down to recognition period. We were going to recognize Scott McCullough this evening, but that has been postponed till the April 8th board meeting. Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of February 18th, February 25th, and March 12th. The accepted placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication has been received from Jill Steadfield, Parking Manager, regarding communication relative to Parking Enterprise Fund in transition of operations to the Parking Expendable Trust Fund.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Fair to public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Mr. Thibodeau, I don't believe we're taking any action on Resolution 121 this evening.
You're not okay. That's my question.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Software Vector Solutions.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of the checket model from Vector Solutions in the amount of $26,998.58. Funding will be through Department 152 Fire Rescue, Fund General, Fund 54 Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Connor Armus, Deputy Planning Manager, regarding Mill Yard Charrette Board of Aldermen Letter of Support.
I do have Connor Muse here. He was going to maybe say a few words about this letter of support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, let me just introduce myself. My name is Connor Muse, I'm new Deputy Planning Manager in the Plan Department. It's a pleasure to meet everyone and look forward to working together. The Community Development Division is organizing a design charrette for the Mill Yard District, which will take place at the end of May. As part of our application with Plan New Hampshire, the organization facilitating the event, we must provide letters of support from governing boards within the community indicating support for the charrette. The project, I believe, has been briefly discussed at the Infrastructure Committee by our Economic Development Director and Community Development Director, and has been shared with other relevant government bodies within the community. Happy to answer any questions about the event itself, what it is, and the process. We ask for your support, and thank you.
Thank you. Very nice to meet you. Okay, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to authorize the President of the Board of Aldermen to sign a letter of support on behalf of the Board of Aldermen to show stakeholder buy-in to the Mill Yard Charrette Plan, New Hampshire Project.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I will declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing two trustees and call for nominations.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Tom Maffick. I'm on the Board of Trustees at the Edgewood Cemetery. The trustees nominate Brian Law and Mike Lozo.
Thank you very much. There being no objection, I will move to close nominations. I will close the nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I support Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderwoman Timmons.
I support Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Moran.
Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Govea.
Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Lopez.
Brian Law, Mike Lozo.
Alderman Sullivan.
Brian Law, Mike Lozo.
Alderman Clemmons.
Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Senate.
Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Jettie.
Brian Law, Mike Lozo.
Alderman Tebow.
Uh, Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Brian Law, Mike Lozo.
Alderman Wilshire.
Brian Law, Michael Lozo.
Trustee Carl Andred.
Mike Lozo and Brian Law.
Trustee Andrew Armstrong. Trustee Thomas Dion.
Mike Lozo and Brian Law.
Trustee Douglas Gagne.
Mike Lozo and Brian Law.
Trustee Morgan Hollis.
Mike Lozo, Brian Law.
Trustee Brian Law. Trustee Michael Lozo.
Brian Law, Michael Lozo.
Trustee Thomas Mafi.
Brian Law, Mike Lozo.
Trustee Robert McIntosh. Trustee Brian Morrissey. Twenty yays, zero nays for the nomination of Brian Law and Michael Lozo.
Motion carries? There was no motion, though. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion that the convention now or eyes?
I'm sorry.
A motion? No, you don't have to do that. Okay.
Just say, Michael Lozo, Brian Law are elected trustees.
Okay, that's all we need. Brian Law and Michael Lozo are appointed trustees. Thank you.
Hartz Commission. Faith Mandravelis, new appointment, term to expire April 27th, 2028, 228.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Lozo is here. I know Mr. Law is not. Vote for the out of office.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a trustee of the Edgewood Cemeteries, according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you.
Hartz Commission. Faith Mandravelis, new appointment, term to expire April 27th, 2028, 228 Whitney Avenue, Manchester, New Hampshire, 03104. Board of Registars, William E. Grady, reappointment, term to expire May 1st, 2028, 14 Tinker Road, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064. Cultural Connections, Rena Vaz, new appointment, term to expire April 22nd, 2028, One Clock Tower Place, Apartment 411, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Downtown Improvement Committee, Cole Morgan, new appointment, term to expire April 22nd, 2028, 20 Lock Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064. Planning Board, Robert Bollinger, reappointment, term to expire March 31st, 2028, 1 White Oak Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063. Scott Leclerc, reappointment, member to alternate, term to expire April 22nd, 2028, 10 Day Lily Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 24th, 2025, and the March 12th, 2025 Special and Regular Budget Review Committee. Be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 26th, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 5th Joint Meeting of the Board of Public Works Commission and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 3rd, 2025 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Budget Review Committee meeting held Monday last night regarding the proposed Resolution 25-135. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last night, we had a first, we had a public hearing on R25-134 and R25-136. There was no public, so there were no comments for or against, and questions were answered on R25-134 by Jeff LaFleur, and questions on R25-136 by Deb Chisholm. The budget meeting held were held immediately after. There were three resolutions that were addressed by the Budget Committee, R25-134, R25-135, and R25-136. All of them passed unanimously.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Fourth reading of R-25-125, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2025 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R25-125 and to speak briefly on it.
Alderman Lopez.
This is becoming very familiar, as people can tell by its fourth reading. So this is last year's HUD plan that we went over and approved, I think, I want to say, April of 2024. There were some subsequent changes to some of the programs. Some of the organizations couldn't do the projects that they wanted to do. There were some new guidelines that were put forth, so we are just continuing to approve the plan that we approved last year.
So you've heard the motion. Discussion on that. Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, so if I could ask a question to the maker of the motion. So, you know, we've heard that, that the new administration has, you know, I think at one point, they, they told the HUD employees that, that they should retire, and they were going, if they didn't retire, they were going to be fired. And then, I don't know if a court got involved or not, but that was put on hold. But the, the money that is controlled by HUD was, you know, put on hold. I don't know if it was released or not, so are you familiar with that? And are we going to get the money is my question, my ultimate question.
If I may.
Oh, Director Sullivan can probably answer that, but if you have the answer, go ahead, Alderman Lopez.
Well, Director Sullivan can correct me if I'm wrong, but we asked something similar. And he pointed out that because this was last year's disbursement, it is not affected by any of the current administration's actions.
Good. Thank you.
He's saying yes back there, Alderman Jettie.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-125 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-129, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $30,885.53 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 7024, opioid abatement expendable trust fund.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R25-129 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Alderman Moran.
Just want to remind everyone, this is opioid abatement funds that are from the lawsuit and not tied to any grants.
No further discussion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 25-129 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-131, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $30,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's Community Grant Program into Arlington Street Community Center Grant Activity, ASCC Community Events.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R25-131 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. I'd like to briefly speak to it, if I may.
Alderman Senate.
This is a charitable grant, not through any government agency that's being awarded to the Arlington Street Community Center. This $30,000 will allow them to bolster the programming that they currently offer and potentially expand it, expand their offerings to the community for these events and programs that they put on for free to all takers.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-131 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-132, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $28,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation into Arlington Street Community Center Grant Activity, ASCC Preschool Readiness Activity Group.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R25-132 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49. I'd also like to briefly speak to this, if I may.
Alderman Senate.
This is very similar to the last one that we did. However, this money, money is going to be directly earmarked for the preschool readiness program that they currently put on at the Arlington Street Community Center. It's by understanding that they, they are currently serving 18 kids, preparing themselves for entry into preschool, and several of those kids are English language learners, where English is not their first language. These funds, as I understand it, will be used to hire translators to serve those kids. The two languages that I understand are most predominant in the class right now are Spanish and Arabic. And so they have translosers identified who will be coming in and will be able to be brought in using these funds.
Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-132 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-133, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the lease with Rambling House LLC.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-25-133.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution 25-133 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-135, approving the cost items of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Nashville Board of Public Works and Ausmeet Council 93, Local 365 regarding required licenses.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R25-135, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
This was unanimously approved by the Budget Committee last night, and after explanations. This is to allow the Board of Public Works to bring in people and at a lower cost per hour and train them to get their licenses, to fill the positions right now that they're having a hard time filling. And it was agreed to by the, the Union and BPW, and it will be an addendum onto their contract.
Any further discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I did vote for this last night in budget. I will vote for it tonight. But I'm hoping through you, I did notice that Director Fodo was on the audience. I did come up with some, just some clarifying questions, if I might.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Fodo, I was in, last night during the budget meeting, Mr. LaFleur mentioned that the funds for paying a CDL license would come through, I believe he said it was a certifications line item. And as I looked at the financial statements through the balance, I think it's through February, there's about $4,500 left in that line item. And I didn't see any monies, I don't see that specific line item under fleet or under parks. And I would assume, again, I don't know. So one of my questions are, is, do we need CDL drivers only in streets, or do we need it for all departments under your watch?
So primarily the two classifications that we've had the biggest challenges with, actually probably three, would be mechanics, truck drivers, and operators. Operators both in solid waste and, and in streets. So it would come out of trainings or certifications, and money could be transferred from another line into that account. And that's, that's how we would do that.
Okay.
But not everybody that we would hire, of course, would need a CDL. It would just be those candidates that we really would like to hire. For instance, many mechanics and many operators don't, they don't have CDLVs because they're not, it's not required for their job, but it is required for our positions. So it would give us a year to be able to, for them to be able to obtain them.
Okay. Can I have a follow-up, please?
Yes.
I think this is a really good program. I think it's very creative, out-of-the-box thinking. Is there a way that you can report back to us or report back to the Board of Public Works on how it's going, to see how successful you are and how the staffing is going and, and the retention rate, especially?
Absolutely.
For those folks that, that come in without the CDL license, go on to get it, and then stay with us for the long term.
I can tell you that right now, we have four candidates, two of which have already been approved by the Board of Public Works pending this approval, and we have two more that are going, they're moving forward at our meeting of the Board of Public Works this coming Thursday.
Fantastic.
So it is, it is working already.
Kudos. Great. Thanks.
You're welcome. Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. I'm sure who this is best pointed at, but more on the, the backend. And I think this is, once again, a good program, and happy to see we're thinking, like my colleague said, outside the box. But on the recruitment side of things, so if the employee goes through, gets their CDL, then leaves early, and there's that amount of money we then have to recover, where in the city, whose job is that to make sure that money is recovered? And are we sending invoices to them? Like, how long are we going? Are we pushing this to a small claims court level? I just want to know what the mechanism is behind that.
So that's something that's actually being discussed right now by HR and payroll, and it'll be up to those two departments to, to figure out how to, to do that. There will be an agreement that the employee will need to sign, you know, stating that they need to repay this money. I'm, I'm not that concerned about it. We have a pretty good retention rate. I think this is a bigger problem for smaller communities, who the pay may not be as, as good as, as what we have, the benefits, our pension. All of that tends to keep people here. So I'm, I don't think that's going to happen a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 25-135. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-135 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
None.
New business resolutions?
First reading of R-25-137, changing the purpose of up to $2,200,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the middle school buildings project to the school building security vestibule safety improvement project.
Given its first, oh, I'm sorry. Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Ed, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing, followed by a special Budget Review meeting on Tuesday, April 8th, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-138, authorizing a subordination agreement regarding subordinating city debt pursuant to a refinancing by Clock Tower Housing Associates Limited Partnership.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of R-25-139, relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances?
None.
Fair to general public comment, Mr. Thibodeau.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Fred Thibodeau, 24, Shion Drive, Nashville. I now attend Mayor Donches' board meetings to make citizens aware of the many lies told by Mayor Donches in those meetings concerning the national spending. Last Board of Aldermen meeting, I read directly from a New Hampshire Superior Court order that the court specifically did not invalidate the spending cap, contrary to the lies told by Mayor Donches. Now, I'd like to discuss another lie told by Mayor Donches. He blames the New Hampshire Legislature when the grandfathered the charter, National Charter, for creating total confusion concerning expenditures. He says that expenditures can now mean anything, like writing a check for petty cash. It is well established- for penny cash. It is well established that government spending must be authorized by the legislative body through the appropriations process. That is precisely the intent of the national spending cap authorized in the Charter, paragraph 56(c) and grandfathered by the New Hampshire Legislature in RSA 49b13:2a. Let me illustrate that point. In this chart, extracted part of 56(c), which is the very heart of the spending cap, it says, "Establishing an annual budget for the next fiscal year, total expenditures shall not exceed an annual amount equal to the annual budget of the current fiscal year." That's it. That's where expenditures are mentioned. There's absolutely no question that the spending cap applies exclusively to expenditures authorized in the annual budget adopted not later than one August of the fiscal year. It is not applied to supplemental budgets after the annual budget is adopted. The language is crystal clear. Mayor Donches has knowingly corrupted the spending cap. Everyone on this board has taken an oath to uphold national laws. By ignoring the spending cap, everyone on this board is complicit in this corruption.
Remarks by members of the board? I'm going to start over here tonight. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. It's wrapping up, but March is Social Work Month, and as the board's only social worker, I thought it'd be wise to bring it up. And if anyone is interested, I'm the keynote speaker at this year's social work celebration by the National Association of Social Workers in Concord, where I'll be discussing the proposed Medicaid cuts here in New Hampshire and how it'll impact Granite State or some people here in Nashua. I've already been around the state, joined by my colleague from Ward Eight at one place with Congressman Pappas, the mayor with Congressman Goodlander. I recently spoke with Governor Ayotte as well. So Medicaid's very important to the working-class people of the state, and I hope that as many of us as possible can advocate to limit the cuts as much as we can. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I'd like to use my time to ask Ms. Graham if you could add me as a sponsor to R-25-137
Yes.
on the board of reappropriation of that money. That's for New Sarls, right? Okay. I also wanted to, he left, but Connor Muse, our new planning, deputy planning manager, I've known Connor for a long time, love to see him back in the city. Nashua North graduate. He ran with my son for Nashua Pal, and they also ran against each other while in high school, but a great cross-country runner, even better spring track runner, but it's fantastic to see him back here, living in the city and working for the city. So fantastic to see him. Congratulations, Mr. Muse. I've never said that before, so good for him.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So it was brought to my attention the other day by a couple of concerned citizens and that, you know, I have, as being an elected official, have a platform here, and, you know, as many of us can probably tell, some of the things that are going on in our country right now are unsettling. Some of those things that are unsettling are coming directly from the President of the United States. And so I'm going to use this time every meeting to talk about some of that stuff, because it is, by being silent, I feel, would add to my complicity in that madness, and I do not want to be complicit with some of the things going on coming from the White House. And so tonight I'm going to talk about immigration and the fact that in the United States, the President of the United States cannot immediately order somebody to leave. The President of the United States can recommend who should and should not be here, but every person has the right to have a hearing whether they deserve to be here or not. It's due process, every single person, whether they are a criminal or not. You want to know why? Because we have seen in instances some folks who have been taken away based on the fact that they have a tattoo that some member of ICE decided was a gang symbol, and they were taken off and jetted away to El Salvador into a prison without getting any due process. Now, it just so happens to be that this person was, in fact, a legal immigrant, but suppose they weren't? Suppose you were a person who was on the street, who decided, who ICE decided to target because they saw that you had a tattoo, and they said, "I want to question you," and they took you in, even though you were a citizen of the United States, and next thing you know, you're on a plane to El Salvador. Now, you might think to yourself, "Well, that would never happen," but it could. And it could because if we don't speak up about these things, that's how it's a slippery slope. Again, I am going to say, I am not necessarily not in favor of deporting people who are violent criminals and probably shouldn't be here in the United States, but every single person deserves the opportunity to go before a judge and tell there the reason why they think they deserve to be here. It's a tenant of our democracy. It is what separates us and makes us the greatest country in the world. Deporting people without giving them a trial does not make the United States the greatest country in the world. It makes us one of the worst countries in the world. And so we need, as citizens, to stand up and to start speaking out about these things when we see them. So again, I hope that the courts can rectify this situation, but it's going to take support from the general public to make sure that this stuff gets out there and that we don't let it happen. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, former Alderman Tebow has come before us several times now and talked about how the Superior Court did, in the case that he had against the city, did not rule that the spending cap was unenforceable.
That's not true.
And that confused me. I have the floor, sir. That confused me because it's not the way I remembered it. So I went and found the Supreme Court case that decided this, Tebow v. City of Nashua, which was decided in 2019, and the conclusion, concluding paragraph of the opinion says, "For all of the above reasons, therefore, we affirm the trial court's determination that the city's spending cap is unenforceable because it does not contain an override provision." So the Supreme Court confirmed that the trial court not only ruled that the spending cap was unenforceable, but affirmed that decision. So, you know, I raise this because I don't think it's right that Mr. Tebow keeps coming to our meetings and saying this, and it's televised out to the public, and it's causing confusion to the public. So I want to assure the public that the court did in fact find that our spending cap was unenforceable because it did not contain the appropriate override provision. So, thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So former Alderman Tebow was right about one thing. We're all complicit, complicit in trying to make Nashua better. And I think every single one of us here, whether we agree on things, are all trying to make it better based on whether it's our constituency, whether it's our point of view, and I think the spending cap, tax cap, is a good example of this. I thought we've worked so far very well together to try to come to a compromise that will work, and we got more work to do on it. But some of the same people that do not want to see this on the ballot are the ones that wanted the barriers on the ballot or the Health Department on the ballot. So, you know, I would say back to them, "Why don't we let the people decide?" Because that's what they would say on those items when I was on the flip side of that issue, right? So I think, you know, and to Alderman Jettie's point, he made a perfect comment, confusion. People get confused by this stuff. I would not know what the heck the spending cap or tax cap was if I was not on this board, just because I wasn't looking into that kind of stuff. So I would be confused by it, too. If he's telling me one thing and somebody else is telling me another, I'd be confused by it. So it would be nice to have the facts out there and the real facts, not somebody's perceived, whatever side that is. And speaking of perceived, so I guess last night on social media, and I'm not part of this group, but I was told that, "Got to get down to City Hall last night because they're spending all your money." And I'm thinking, "What money did we spend last night? Oh, we spent the $800,000 that we're going to get back. So we didn't really spend any money, and there's no interest on that, so it's a wash. So we didn't spend that $800,000." So, you know, I ask all of us to make sure we're telling people the right things out there because people see that and they go, "Oh, my God, they're spending, you know, almost a million dollars on stuff for PFAS. We don't want, you know, PFAS out of our water. We like drinking plastic." But, you know, at the end of the day, we didn't spend any money on this. It's a test. It's a pilot, and we're getting paid back for it. So I just want people to know that, you know, it's, facts matter, and unfortunately, they don't always get out there, and sometimes the loudest people get heard the most. And, you know, we're all trying to do, like I said in the beginning, we're all trying to do what's best for Nashua. And sometimes, again, we won't agree on something. We may vote against something, and someone else may vote for it, but at the end of the day, it's our point of view that's better for the citizens of Nashua. And I don't distrust anyone in here that they wouldn't do what's right in their mind for the city, whether I agree with politics or not. So I just wanted to say that, and I hope that, and I hope we do get that tax cap back out, and we do iron out something that'll work for everybody. So thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to take my time to talk a little bit about things that are happening that will affect Nashua. I always worry about bringing national politics in here, but I think we're going to see the effects in a lot of different ways, and we're all feeling it. I, for one, being on the Budget Committee for the last seven years, I'm thinking about what's that going to look like based on the decisions and the cuts that are being made nationally, and what we are going to have to decide as a city we want to keep and what kind of values we keep. I just, it's very hard for me to wrap my head around thinking about so many things that are being cut. Cancer research, HIV research, Medicaid is being considered, Social Security. We're not even doing lead abatement right now because we're afraid that we're not going to get that money. $7 million in lead abatement, so we're just not doing lead abatement. Those are the types of things that are happening because of what's happening in D.C., and it's chaos. And I think that as a budget, a budget is a values document, and so we're going to have to decide, if they decide they're going to cut transit, which is 80% federally funded, do we, as a city, hold that as a value from an equity standpoint, helping people get to their medical appointments through the van that comes to your house? Do we believe in that, and then do we want to fund that, and what does that look like? So I am getting increasingly concerned. I know it's going to be a really tough, tough budget season, and I just want people to think about when things are happening nationally, what that's going to happen, what that's going to mean for us in this city and for us as Aldermen as we decide how we're going to steward for Nashua.
Committee assignments. I mean, committee meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, 3:26, here in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 PM, will be the meeting of the Infrastructure Committee. We've got some really wicked neat stuff to discuss, accepting a street, and I think some parking is going to be discussed as well. So everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow is the Cultural Connection meeting at 12:00 noon. We meet tomorrow morning at 10:30. There's a lot of concern with that community. It's a BIPOC community, and whether we're going to even be a committee next year. I mean, it's affecting that community, which is my community, pretty harshly. And even the segregation issue came up. I mean, I might not be able to sit next to you or you, but that is a factor in that. Huh? You won't let that happen? Okay, good. Because I'm not going anywhere, just so you know. Yeah, so that's a big issue in the BIPOC community, that they are worried that coming to these meetings may put a target on their head. And born and raised here, parents was born and raised here, their parents was born and raised here, over 300 years of slavery. I've been here for a long time and do the Slave Act. So who knows? He might go way back to the Slave Act and say, "Okay, you got to go, too." I'm not an immigrant. I was here through forced migration. That's how I got here. I'm the only non-immigrant in this room, ancestors, was they came here for betterment. We were forced here. We were forced here. So all those naysayers, this is true, all these naysayers about, you know, blacks should go back, well, we were forced there. We are forced migration, not immigration. And, but the people that's in the Cultural Connection are mostly immigrated here for betterment, and they deserve a right to be here, just like I was forced here through my ancestry. I have a right to be here. This is my country. I'm not going anywhere. I think I have more rights than almost everybody around this table. As a matter of fact, all y'all. So, and I'm Native American, too. So there you go.
Any other committee announcements?
I love that.
Alderman Dowd.
Thursday, Joint Special School Building Committee at Nashua High North at 7:00.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the March 25th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:18 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.